Okay, I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to water of Wednesday, December 18th, 2019. Please join us in a pledge allegiance to the flag.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I like to start, well, it's kind of a status, I gotta start this way, but Francis DePaulo there, he was the head of the MTA, he was the resident of West Bridgewater, he passed away. I'd like to have a moment of silence. All right, thank you very much. Other selectmen there, he cannot be here tonight there, and so we will be Anthony Kinnahan, so it'll be Denise and I. And I'm gonna move the agenda around, or I'll go directly to our common vicarious license there, with the other two, if not, application for common vicarious license, a K-1 patent as LLC, DVA, New York Pizza, located at 271 East Center Street, formerly Pillar Inc., DVA, New York Pizza. Okay. So what's actually, you wanna do up there? Is it a change of?
Yeah, it's a change of ownership. It was Pillar Corp. before, doing business as New York Pizza. We kinda transitioned it, we've been there for 14 months, but we transitioned through Pillar formally, we're applying for a change of ownership now.
Yep.
But Arish and myself and our staff have been there for 14 months, so if you stop by, maybe, you know, we're familiar faces, if you haven't stopped by, stop by, please, for some pizza, salad, subs. We make a mean cheese steak.
Do you have any questions, Denise, of the thing?
No, I don't have any questions.
It's not a public hearing, it's just a change.
Just a change of ownership. No, I don't have any questions.
So, okay. Okay, is there a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good luck.
Thank you.
Down in, go down there and eat a lot of pizzas.
Good luck.
We'll come by.
Okay. All right, now we're gonna move on to application for common vicarious license for West Center Street, HD LLC, DVA, Honeydew Donuts, located at 475 West Center Street, formerly 475 West Center Street, CORP, DVA Honeydoughs. So tell exactly what you're gonna do.
So my name's Craig Goldman, I'm the owner. I purchased four Honeydew franchisees, West Bridgewater was one of the locations from a previous owner, so again, similar to the pizza place.
Yeah, right.
A change of ownership. We took over on June 13th. Sitting with me is the general manager, who's been with the Honeydew for 10-plus years, and been the general manager for these four stores, will continue in that function, and so it's simply a change of ownership.
Okay, you have any questions?
No.
So if anybody wants good donuts, good pizza, they're both here, so.
Go for dinner, then go for breakfast the next morning, okay.
Okay, is there a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
You're on your own, didn't take too long, did it?
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in, and good luck, and we'll be able to see you.
Don't wanna be disrespectful, but we're gonna leave, if you don't mind.
Oh, no, no.
Feel free, that's fine.
Feel free, you wanna leave, you wanna stay? It's up to you.
This isn't a, this isn't a bright, 'cause you've already agreed, but come by for a free coffee.
Oh, thank you, that's very nice of you.
Thank you very much.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you, Seke.
Good luck.
Best wishes to you, thank you, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you. Thank you. Thanks so much.
Exactly, okay.
Take care, everybody, thank you, hope to see you guys soon. We'll see you soon, okay, thank you everybody. Thank you, Alden.
Okay, take care of yourself now, good luck. Okay, now we go through the agenda, the, oh, Pat, you got here, huh? Is it slippery out there, or?
I don't know, the traffic is pretty bad.
Okay.
It's not slippery, there's nothing.
Yeah. Well, we'll just do a few more here, and then we'll wait to, Mary Walden gets here.
She should be here.
Yeah, she's gonna be a little bit late.
We can do a few more.
And the police officer, they had a swearing in, that's going to 7:30, and the perthone interviews, they're being canceled because they're looking at the background checks, and we'll be putting that on at a future agenda. Okay, and that brings us down to a vote on license renewals, entertainment, public amusement, class I, II, III, graduate repairs, and common vicarious license.
So Mr. Chairman, everything is in order, as normal at this time of the year, we're still waiting on a couple of pieces of paperwork, and one or two final inspections, so I would just ask that the board, if it's so inclined, is to approve all licenses as presented to you, recognizing that it is subject still to final inspections into any final documentation. One thing, just in full transparency, is that a couple of the facilities changed their hours in a minor way from last year to this year, for example, some of them were open 8:00 to 4:00 last year, chose to reopen 9:00 to 5:00. We reflected that in the new license, but we provide the board a memo, so that way you know what those changes are, but other than that, there's nothing substantial.
Yeah, we, Denise looked through them, and we made some corrections on them already, on the licenses, so they were taken care of. Okay, is there any questions, Denise, on this there? Is there a motion to approve all the annual license renewals?
I'll make a motion to approve contingent on the remaining final inspections, and whatever other final issues need to be resolved.
I'll second the motion. There's no other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so voted. Hi, Annie, how are you?
Yeah, how are you?
Good. You know, that's gonna be delayed till, I think, about 7:30?
Yeah, I know.
Okay, so, that's that town clerk that just came in, okay. So now we'll move to be a vote on board, selectmen, FY 21 budget message.
Yep, so we're starting the FY 2021 budget season. So with that said, we are, we will be presenting to you in the month of January, once we have all of the information back, about potentially moving town meeting to May. In the meantime, as we do every single year, is that we send a budget message out from the Board of Selectmen, communicating what type of message you're looking to communicate as they turn in their budget requests. Normally, historically, we have done a level services budget. Selectman Kinnahan, when he informed me earlier tonight that he was not going to be able to make the meeting, he had asked that we also do vote for a level services budget, but obviously he's not here, so only the two of you would vote. So if you could just direct me as to what type of message you would like me to send to the department heads, I will do so accordingly.
Yeah, I would like to see a man, you know, a level service budget. I talked to Kinnahan tonight, he did call me, said he couldn't be here, so he didn't find me that. So it just, I repeat what you just said. Okay.
So, I'm okay with a level services budget, but in prior years, when we've asked for a level services budget, I've seen new services introduced into the budget, and the budget just grows. So I don't think it's fair to say a level funded budget, because that's impossible. You have contractual increases, and there's other needs in the town that need to be taken care of, so I get, I don't know how, quite how to word this into the message, but I would like to see the department heads proceed with a level services budget, and be mindful of their overall budget, and to look for ways to become more efficient, and possibly, if not reduce their budget overall, look for ways to save the town some money.
Okay, I agree with that. Very good, very good statement. Okay, anything else on it?
Nope, I would just ask for a vote.
All right, is there a motion to the pack?
Motion.
Yeah. All right, I'll second. Any just more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so voted. Okay, vote on Scott Golda's vacation carryover request.
So per his contract, he is looking to carry over two vacation days, I have signed it, and per his contract, the Board of Selectmen also have to ratify, so I would ask for a vote to allow him to carry over two vacation days.
Motion to carry over vacation days.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approve the minutes of November 20th, 2019.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, except for review, the meeting minutes of December 4th, 2019.
Motion to accept the minutes for review.
Yeah. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so voted. Why the contract for relocation of a transfer station building, and to sell your engineer, and this is a transfer station, and then, I guess it's been reviewed, and reviewed the contract, and also, you know, to sell your engineer.
Yep, so we went back to, so Mr. Chairman, we went to town meeting this past year, we secured $18,000 in funding, so that way we could hire an engineer in order to be able to begin the process of replacing the building at the transfer station. We contracted, we contacted a number of engineers, many of them who honestly couldn't do it for the $18,000, and then Mr. Silva gave us an estimate of $18,000. So with that said, the article gives Chris as DPW Director the authority to be able to sign and execute the contract, but only the Board of Selectmen can actually award the contract, so as a result, I would be asking you to award the contract to Mr. Silva for $18,000 for said services.
Any questions on that, or is there a motion to approve that?
So the engineering plan is for moving, relocating the building, as well as for the septic design, is that included?
That's the intent, yes. Again, the unfortunate part is, is that if it turns out that there's more engineering that's needed, we're gonna have to go back to town meeting at that point. The hope is, is that we're going to be able to do minor adjustments with the building and/or the septic system.
Can I make a motion to approve the contract?
I'll second it. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so voted. Okay. So I think the other thing is, while we're here, the communication reports from boards, commissions, and town officials, letter from the school committee, appointment of the new superintendent, that was a letter that was sent out, so I think everybody knows about it now, it was in the newspaper, even if nobody buys the newspaper, seems to be, you know.
It was online.
Online, too.
It was online.
So, okay. All right, now.
Well, I think we, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Bodwell.
Yeah, and he's the one that's gonna be the new superintendent.
Right.
Very good. All right, what we're gonna do, we're gonna move there, Pat is here, and Mary Walden, you look very nice, and both are here tonight, and we ask you both to come down here, and because of, you know, for years, you know, I've been working with Pat, and he's done a lot for West Bridgewater and all the communities, I think there's 17 of us now all the way down to Plymouth, and Pat is one of these guys that is out there 24 hours a day, and he's been figuring in just about everything, from our senior center, and we were looking at, years ago, for a grant writer, we finally got him out of, out of the Old Colony Planning Council, and a lot of people don't know what we do, but whether it's traffic lights down here, or, you know, runs many, many, many functions that we do, and he's a great help for the, for the communities and for the area. And at his banquet there, to tell you the truth, I didn't have anything to give him, so I didn't get up and I didn't say anything, so. We're here tonight, so, you know, which I will be asking Mary Walden, she's the new executive director, and I'll be asking maybe her to say a few words, but first, I'd like to deal with Pat. And I have a proclamation for you, Pat, from the Board of Selectmen, West Bridgewater, Massachusetts, whereas Pasquale, Pat, Samorella migrated as a child to the city of Brockton from Italy, where he was eight years old, and is a graduate of Brockton High School. He earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in political science, public administration from Northeastern University, and hold a Master of Arts degree in urban affairs and planning from Boston University, whereas Pat joined Old Colony Planning Council in 1977, where he served as a transportation planner, a transportation program manager, and assistant executive director. Pat was then promoted to executive director in 2001, and served in that capacity for the past 18 years. Whereas Pat has served as distinction on many area boards, including the Metro South Chamber of Commerce, the Plymouth County Development Council, the Plymouth Area Chamber of Commerce, Southeastern Economic Development Corporation, and the Mass higher Brockton. And whereas Pat, many years of service, has had a direct positive impact on the town of West Bridgewater, therefore it be resora, we, the Board of Selectmen, the town of West Bridgewater, do hereby proclaim December 18th, 2019, as Pasquale Caramella's Day, in recognition of Pasquale Caramella for his outstanding accomplishments. We extend to him our deepest appreciation for all his dedicated work, and wish him well in all his future endeavors. In witness, therefore, yet of the great seal of the town of West Bridgewater, fix the 18th day of December 2019. Board of Selectmen, L.L.F. Marilla Chairman, Denise Ray, Vice, and Anthony Kinnahan Clerk. Pat, this is all yours, and we're gonna thank you again. Great, thank you. We're certainly gonna miss you.
Thank you, I appreciate all your support over the years, the Board of Selectmen, working with the Old Colony Planning Council, and I'm sure Mary's gonna continue working with the communities, and helping the communities as much as they can. Really appreciate it, I'm honored to receive such a reward. Thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Now, because I want you to meet Mary Walden, the new OCPC executive director. Mary is, we choose Mary from a roster of 60, and I was part of that, hi, how are you guys, this family? Do this, okay. And we're, I look forward now to seeing Mary, and I'm quite sure there's gonna be a few changes up there, but Mary will, I'm quite sure do a good job. At Pat's party we had up there, I talked to the ex-mayor of Brockton, their units, and Mary was the executive director, and he said to me, and he says, yeah, I understand, I don't know how he found out, you had, you appointed Mary, and I said, that's true, he says, well, listen, I was the mayor, but Mary did the work. So, Mary, you wanna say a few words, and welcome to the West Bridgewater, and hope we be on the council, or work with you, and anything, we'll continue the great work that you do.
Good evening, and apologies for being a little bit late.
Oh, that's fine.
Coming from, I thought when, when the police were coming in the room, that may have seen me come through the town. But they are really big shoes to fill. Pat has been with OCPC for 42 years. Amazing work, the staff is amazing work. It is not Brockton-centric. I've worked with Dave when I was working at Bridgewater State University, prior to that, working on economic development, prior to that, working in the State House, prior to working with that, with Mass Development. I've had many opportunities to work in different avenues, and I know West Bridgewater's potential, and I know that working with Dave and the Select Board, it will be my honor, but more importantly, having a Pasquale Caramella Day today is truly an amazing day. You don't hear of people's longevity, other than you, Select Chairman.
Thank you.
So what comes with me is a little humor, I guess, but, but, right, we need to respect that established history, and that experience, and not throw it away, but yet enhance it, and then look for ways that we can take the newcomers, and the millennials, and everybody else, and really bring them in, and, and make this region, this, this region that Pat has been at the helm, and Dan Crane prior to that. I believe I'm the first female of the organization, and, but that's just, that's just a female. There's work that needs to be done, and I look forward to working with the Select Board, the town administrator, and the region, so thank you for the opportunity.
Well, thank you, Mary, because I'm quite sure you get right in there, I know there'll be some changes you probably wanna make, but I know, I talked to you today, and thank you, what a lovely Christmas party you used to put on there today. That was a little bit different.
We had an ugly sweater contest that, that, the staff put together, like decorating a cubicle. The Select Board did a pretty good job with the sweater, by the way. Oh, no, you didn't, well, you did.
Well, that's right, you know.
Did you have a sweater?
Huh?
Did you have a sweater?
Oh, glad you had to see the sweater. Yeah, but I had to give it back to her, that's how it works. Thank you again, and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, best wishes, nice to meet you, too.
Thank you, thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I just wanted to say one thing as well, I just wanna say, because I'm not gonna have this opportunity to say it again, is I just really wanna say thank you to Pat. You know, I've been here now going on my seventh year, we do not, being a small town, we don't have a planner, most towns do, and because we have to be able to share resources and squeeze a lot more out of few people, is that OCPC has just been a humongous help to myself, and to everybody else in the town. No matter when I make a phone call, they always provide the information. Pat, I have texted you and called you plenty of times at night, thinking that you're not working, not only are you working, you're usually in another meeting. So with that said, again, I just really want to say thank you.
I have to give you the, you know.
Oh, I have it, we, because, because I was gonna say, I've worked with Mary, so, but, but in all honesty, that department is so well-run, and so helpful, and that only happens with great leadership, which obviously you provided, so again, I really want to say thank you to you, and I have no doubt, working with Mary, it will be seamless, because I've worked with you in the past, and I know the person that you are, and again, had great success with you when you were at Bridgewater, and look forward to continuing that.
Thank you.
But thank you, thank you.
Thanks again, Pat, and Mary. Okay, so maybe we can go right on to, I'd like to welcome the Canducee family here today, they are, so I've known them for many, many years, I mean, they're not strangers to me, and, and the, you know, the Board of Selectmen here, in the town of West Bridgewater, and we have Annie on the telly here to put the swearing in, and, so Annie?
Are we ready to do it now?
Uh, is that everybody here, or?
Are we waiting for anyone?
Anybody else coming there that we're gonna wait for, or?
Do you wanna do some of the other?
Well, so let me ask you, Mr. Chairman, did you want, are we, did you wanna do it now, and then we'll take a recess for pictures, or finish the last couple of items, and then...
Doesn't matter, but you don't, yeah.
Your choice.
Do you mind if we just go through a few more, and then we can have some quality time?
All right, you wanna finish the?
Do you wanna take pictures?
I think so, and they can have as much time as they would like.
Okay, so that's what we'll do, so we'll continue, so where we left off, and the superintendent's, public comments, okay, do we have any public comments? I have one.
Oh, boy.
I'm a candidate for reelection, so you're not, so you can't get rid of me that easy. So I, I will definitely be, that's been, kind of question been asked, and all the same, but tonight, I'm gonna just reveal that I will be a candidate in April, and look forward to keep running this, this community, it seems to be running great, this is a great team up here, of the three of us, and I just look forward to do many other things that we have to accomplish, and just keep this town moving. Okay? And any other public comments out here, anybody would like to make anything? Okay, I guess if that's not, we'll throw that to the David, the town administrator, road acceptance policies.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So real quickly, I just wanna let you know that for the past almost two months, I've been working on with town council and the chairman of our planning board, Hugh Hurley, a new road acceptance policy for the town of West Bridgewater. In essence, we're gonna have two policies, one is going to be for the way we approve roads that are approved through the planning board in a subdivision process, which ultimately winds its way to town meeting, and the second one is for any other road that exists that has not gone through the subdivision road process. So this is a finished policy, it has been entirely vetted by the planning board's chairman, along with town council, as is our standard practice, I'm asking you to accept it for review this evening, and then I will place it on the next meeting, and at that time, I would ask you to accept it, unless you have any changes that you would like to make at that time.
Any questions?
No, I'll make a motion to accept the policy for review.
Okay, I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted, okay.
Second item is, is in reference to New Bedford Waste, this is the company ABC/New Bedford Waste, that handles all of our recycling and solid waste. It's unfortunate, because there were a lot of pressures in that environment now, and some people have seen the 60-minute documentary in reference to it. As the state of Massachusetts continues to close areas that solid waste is able to go to, it further puts pressure on what they're able to use for landfills, and how they are able to take the waste that we have, and be able to process it on their end. As a result, this company, along with some others, have started to increase their prices under a force majeure clause in the, in the contract. Mr. Chairman, you'll recall that a handful of years ago, I spent a lot of time negotiating these contracts with a handful of different firms, at that point, they gave us a really good price, and unfortunately, the environment just changed a little bit. I informed the board at the last couple of meetings ago, that they had forced us to go from $60 a ton to $75 a ton, and they have now forced us to go from $75 a ton, effective January 1st, to $93 a ton. So as a result, I am now in the process of conducting another statewide survey, or at least in the South Shore Survey, to see what other municipalities are using, and if I'm able to get a better price, I'll probably have to exercise a clause in this contract to escape it, and to be able to re-sign with somebody else. I'll obviously keep you informed in the meantime.
You know, we've always tried to keep it down there, you know, when these increases come up for us, because I already feel that, you know, people are paying a good sizable amount of taxes, and they're already paying on their taxes, but now, this thing is just going out of control here, and I think possibly next year, we're gonna have to look at this, and David's gonna do some more research on it, and I hope it, we can keep it down as, you know, because it's getting a problem, to get rid of your waste, that, as we see on the excess road down up at Copan Street, they're leaving it all over the place, they're leaving it over here on our west side, up there in Manly Street, and all along there, highway picking stuff up all the time, they're just getting rid of everything, they're not taking nothing. So anyhow, well, we'll just have to face it when it comes, and look at it, and continue working with it, and I appreciate what you've done in that area.
Yep, and we'll continue to look at it, because if we can reduce cost, we will. Next item is, is, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Dave, could I just ask you a question? At one point, I think it was a few years ago, we talked about maybe hauling our own. With the way the prices are escalating from a third party, is there any potential cost savings in hauling of, hauling our own?
There is not, because they have not increased a dollar in our hauling cost. So if we haul it, we still have to pay whatever the going rate is, as to where we ultimately dispose it, so dispose of it. So it's the disposal rate, not the hauling rate that is increased, so it is not to our advantage to do that.
You're gonna continue to dig into it, and?
I did, because.
You know, we have much more to probably report out.
Yep. Next is Columbia Gas, obviously, we're in the winter months, Columbia Gas has informed us that they are expanding their access to an affordable program for people that are low-income or meet that threshold. So as a result, I've just placed it on the agenda, because 15% to 16% of our population is over 65 years old, and if they are watching this, and you use Columbia Gas, I wanna make sure that this program is available, so if you need assistance, I'm gonna read off the phone number, we've already placed it on our website as well, but it's 1-800-688-6160. You can go to columbiagasma.com, which is their website, sign up for the program, the program, signing up is obviously free, but if you have an opportunity to save yourself some money, please take advantage of that program. And the last is, it's just an FYI to everybody who's watching as well, Christmas and New Year's happens to fall on a Wednesday this year, so as a result, we have to tweak some of our schedules. have to tweak some of our schedules. Town Hall, Council on Aging, and the transfer station will be closed on Wednesday, and we close early on Tuesday the day before. Thursday, the Town Hall and the Council on Aging will be open for regular business. The key is the transfer station, which is normally closed on Thursdays, will now be open on those two Thursdays, since Wednesday they were closed, especially knowing at the Christmas season, that a lot of people have additional waste to be able to bring.
I think, I think that's a good gesture, because the one thing about that transfer station, if people wanna see it open, is, especially on the, on the holidays, and I think that's a good gesture that this is being done.
They do, so that is my report, and.
All right, the only thing, you got anything else to say, but maybe happy.
I wish you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year to all you out there, and good health for the holiday, and hope that the weather gets a little bit better, and a little bit warmer, and, you know, because the winter started real, real close there, and it looked like we're beginning to good-sized bill there for icing and things like that this year, the way things are going.
I wanna wish you the best.
We're not even, yeah, thank you. We're not even into it yet there, and you see every day, and, you know, I think, you know, if I ever got a car, instead of having my, my garage filled up with duck, and I'd have a two-car garage there, because living in New England, scraping out winters every morning here, you know, I don't have that, you know, turn the key on there, but then you gotta wait quite a while for the winters to defrost there, so we're in a real, real season this year. Well anyhow, thank you, because I think we had a great year here, and, you know, I wanna thank the, you know, the people that we have working for us, and everything else, and all that, that bring it to us, because without them, we have nothing here. They're all doing a very, very good job for us.
Thank you.
So thank you, and Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year.
Wish you the best when you race next year, too.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now, I guess the Canducey family is here, and they're waiting attentive there, and it's a great pleasure to, to have them here, and, and maybe we can get Annie up here, and, yeah, our town clerk, put a swearing-in.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, James Candace.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and partially.
I will faithfully and partially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
The duties of police officer.
The duties of police officer.
For the town of West Bridgewater.
For the town of West Bridgewater.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States of America.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the laws of Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the town of West Bridu, sorry, the town of West Bridgewater.
The town of West Bridgewater.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, good luck.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good to see you again, too.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. So, Mr. Chairman, if, I know the family would like to take some pictures, so if